Hi Vanessa.
I'm there. I saw you when you came in. Rushed in.
I went on the wrong one.
That's okay.
I'll get it together.
You, you made it.
So many different ones have to go on, so I wasn't paying attention.
That's okay.
Councilmember Waring, I was reminded at the, um, at the Charleston Water Service Board this morning that even though your dad got, um, richly deserved accolades for his service on city council and St. Andrews Public Service District, that for many years he served, uh, on CPW, now Charleston Water Service. How many years was?
Actually sixteen years and they were kind enough, you know, one of the things in lieu of flowers we asked of contributions be sent to the Waring Center for seniors who, you know, maybe can't afford to pay the full rate. We've, we've got three senior centers within about a mile and a half. I'm not senior centers, but senior apartment complexes than about a mile and a half uh, of that senior center. And some of those people frankly, you know, all they get is a social security check. They can't afford to join. So trying to set up a little pool. CPW, he served for sixteen years and they, they, uh, contributed sixteen gold memberships to, uh,
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty good.
That's great.
All right. I think, uh, we're at or a little past five o'clock. So I'd like to call this, uh, People twenty eighth meeting of city council to order. Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilwoman Del Chapo.
Here.
Councilmember Shealy. Councilmember Shealy.
Here.
Councilmember Sacrin.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brady.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Waring.
Here.
Councilmember Seeking.
Here.
Councilmember Shade.
Present.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Appel. Councilmember Appel.
Sorry, here.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Here.
Mayor Tacklinberg.
Here. And now if you would like to join us, uh, Councilmember Shade will lead us in a prayer. And over my right shoulder back there is, uh, Old Glory, um, station for us to give the pledge of allegiance.
I'm not going to sing these lyrics, but I thought these lyrics would be appropriate for what we're going through today. So bear with me as I read these lyrics on this hymn I think we all will recognize in a short order. Eternal Father, strong to save, whose arm death bond the restless wave who bids the mighty ocean deep its own appointed limits keep. O hear us when we cry to thee for those in peril on the sea. Upon the terrace dark and rude, and bid its angry tumult cease. And give the, the wild confusion peace. O hear us when we cry to thee for those in peril on the sea. O Trinity of love and power, thy children shield and dangers hour from rock and tempest, fire and foe. Protect them where so'er they go. Thus evermore shall rise to thee, let hymns of praise from land and sea. Thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
Please, DC. Of the United States of America.
End of the disc.
Thank you all very much. Um, next is the approval of our city council minutes, um, of April fourteenth. Got a motion to approve. Second, any additions, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Close the ayes. Seven minutes are approved. I didn't have any special announcements, uh, notably I did not have to share how to exit the building in the event of, uh, untroubled evacuation of the building. So I guess everybody's got their own exit in mind in case something happens. Next is our citizens' participation period, and I think I'm going to call Tracy McKee to give us, uh, an update on that. Or is Jennifer going to do that?
I think, uh, Jennifer and Vanessa already have what they need to go through the citizen participation. But I'm happy to share my screen if we need to.
Okay. Well, I have some information. I didn't know if you were doing something, um, in addition. Okay. So we received, I think it was forty-eight requests. Forty-four, um, of the conversations that we received dealt with requesting an extension of the sixty day comment period. And I think, are you all familiar with that? And then we had three other citizen requests, and it was a request to reopen the parks and tennis courts. And there was one additional request for city council, and this was from um, a person at the College of Charleston who is concerned about vehicles being parked on the sidewalk on the College of Charleston campus and feels that that's a safe, a safety hazard and wants someone to look into that.
All right.
That's basically all of the ones that we have without individually calling out the same ones that were all asking for an additional sixty day comment period.
Thank, thank you. So if I may, I would like to, I know it's part of our committee report, um, in Public Works to talk about Army Corps of Engineers, uh, project. But since I have a little news for y'all and the vast majority of our comments were about that extension. If you don't mind, I'll just go ahead and share that with you now. Is that okay?
Mayor, mayor, we also sent city council so they'll have copies. Not necessarily with them, but that they can peruse through within the next few days.
Yes, and I read those this afternoon. So as we discussed the other day at our, um, weekday meeting, um, I think it was Friday, about requesting an extension for this comment period. I think I shared with y'all that, that I had, um, basically requested an extension even before, uh, they released the plan because I felt like we needed a little more time. This is such a, um, important and a long lasting project for our city. It's really, um, uh, critical that we all have the time to digest it and have, uh, the ability. So the Army Corps, uh, Colonel Rachel Hondred, uh, got back to me this afternoon with some very good news. And, and it surprised me a little bit. It's, it's even better than I expected because I thought that she would just give us a longer period. Um, but what she offered us, which, which I, again, I think is great, is to in essence have a second, uh, comment period that would not occur until, uh, the first part of next year, twenty twenty-one. So we're currently under this sixty day comment period now, correct? And, and that would run its course and we're going to urge everyone to, uh, make comments and dig into the plan and all like that. But then we'll have a whole nother six months to do our own active engagement. We'll be able to have community meetings, neighborhood meetings once this, uh, distancing is relaxed a little bit. And then have another period after the beginning of twenty twenty-one that, uh, additional comments can be made for thirty day period that they'll open it up. So we'll, we'll literally be able to save comments throughout the balance of, uh, twenty twenty with all kinds of engagement and then, uh, uh, load them up, if you will, put them in when the comment period, uh, reopens at the first part of next year. So, um, it's, it's a lot more than saying they're extending from sixty to ninety days. It really almost gives us a ten month period in which to engage the public and to get comments and be able to enter them, um, into the process. So, uh, I don't know about y'all, but I thought that was a very creative, out of the box, uh, offer from the Corps of Engineers. They're really working with us and, and I think that's a great solution.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I think that's, I have to agree with you. I think that's wonderful. Did you discuss what at the turn of the year, will it be then a thirty day period or a sixty day period? What would it be on?
It'll be, it'll be a thirty day period after, uh, after sometime after the first of the year. And she's, she's not specifying what day it starts on, but it
Sure, sure.
I, I presume in the first quarter of, uh, of next year.
Well, thank you for working on that because, you know, we, we had a discussion on that during our Public Works Committee. And I think all of us agreed that sixty days was too short. I think that's a wonderful solution.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Mitchell, I, I, I'm, I'm happy to hear that because I had a lot of calls from the people in my district, especially, uh, Rosemont, this Rosemont area and where Bridgeview is located, uh, because they are terrified that it's not coming in their area. So I was, my phone was ringing off the hook dealing with it. So I believe this would give us more time to even look at it and really make this decision. And the Corps of Engineers would look at, uh, very seriously because they feel that they're being left out of it. And so far as the, uh, those areas, which is, uh, probably low income areas, uh, areas that, uh, people, you know, African American areas, they feel that they're being left out of it. So I'm glad that they extended this so we can give them more time to hear what's going on and to learn what more going on to give their input.
Absolutely. We'll have time to have individual neighborhood meetings out there. Councilman Jackson and Shade.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, um, I thank you very much. I, I do appreciate you, um, um, helping the Corps come to this, I guess, untraditional, uh, decision for extending or having a different way of, of engaging the public comment. So thanks for the work that you've put into that, Mayor. I'm just wondering, um, are, are we going to try and schedule an official council work session during the sixty days? Or what's your plan for bringing us together so we can start to, you know, hear sort of the same information in the same room or same Zoom? It has to be that way and, uh, you know, get started working together as a decision-making body.
Well, um, at the pleasure of council, um, we, we can have our own workshop meeting on this. I, I do, particularly with this extra time, um, but I, I would like to have a robust, um, um, delving into this project during the sixty day comment period. I think it would be helpful to the Corps if prior to the end of the sixty days that we get as many people to go ahead and dig into it, um, give their comments, uh, even if they're considered initial comments. I, I don't want this to be a situation where, uh, uh, folks read this, oh, I'll just wait until next year to make my comment. It will really be helpful to the Corps if we can go ahead to the best of our ability to make comments during the first sixty days. So yes, we'll, we'll, um, urge people to do that. As soon as we get to where we can, uh, have physical meetings again, we'll do it. Um, I'm glad to schedule a, a, a separate workshop for council to, to go have Mr. Wilbert make a, uh, entire presentation. And I did, did want to add about their offer that they've never done this before in Corps history for any other community. I think it's way beyond, um, um, the fact that we're in the midst of coronavirus. I think it's also a realization of how, uh, important, impactful this project is to this community. So I'm really thankful again to them for, for stepping out and doing this. Councilmember Shade.
Mayor, I was going to pick up on what you just commented on. I think the danger, um, like all things that we are as human beings, see an opportunity to respond and comment for a second opportunity in twenty twenty-one that we can relax. And that is the exact opposite of what we need to be doing. We need to make sure that we engage our community, uh, get these comments in, uh, engage with one another as to what we should be doing with, with this project. And then build on that, um, in, in twenty twenty-one. So I appreciate your comments and your effort in getting that, that's second bite of the apple, so to speak, um, next year as well. I just want, want us to relax on, um, not doing anything at all during this sixty day period. So thank you.
Absolutely. That's really important, y'all.
Mr. Mayor, just one.
Councilmember Appel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, again, kudos to you for working with, um, the Army Corps to secure this additional, um, public comment, uh, concession. I know that the, the federal and state governments regulatory procedures can sometimes be, uh, pretty difficult to, to contend with. So, so, uh, I can't, um, stress enough how, uh, how, how happy we should all be to have this additional opportunity. And I thought I might just add that perhaps, you know, the focus could be over the next sixty days trying to tackle some of the bigger picture issues here, some of the broader brush policy issues that this project presents. I mean, I don't think we're at the point now of getting into the weeds on engineering and some of the more technical arcane aspects of a project of this magnitude. But I do think that the community, um, i- is, is in a position now to begin that more broad brush, uh, policy discussion. Um, because this, this really, I, I spent some time over the weekend looking at the, uh, the report. I mean, it, it is a major undertaking, uh, with a lot of, uh, implications. And, um, I think that that could be perhaps a focus of our, uh, time over the next sixty days. Just be talking about this price tag, talking about this concept, talking about how we want to address some of these issues at a ten thousand foot level. I think that could be a good way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
I, I, I had a very similar thought. I just wanted to, um, you know, put on the record during this, um, discussion. Thank you for initiating it, Mayor. I mean, I, I know that the conversations that I've had at length with people, um, since the report came out. My, my encouragement is that really we have the perfect, um, timing in terms of looking at this with the overview, as you're saying, because we're about to start our comp plan. So I know we're going to have a report on that, an update on that from Mr. Lindsay in a second. And, and it just seems like those two things can dovetail so perfectly that we're not going to compartmentalize. We're going to incorporate, you, these serious decisions we have to make at the Army Corps report at the same time as we're making, you know, even more serious decisions about how we want to, um, support our, our vision for our community for the next ten years. So it seems like it all just sort of comes together.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, uh, if I may just point, comment, um, Councilmember Sacrin, that the sun is setting right on your top of your head. It's very interesting visual effect. Just thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you. I think it's my, my bald head too, so that doesn't help.
Oh, I thought maybe you had shined it up or something.
It's, it's a halo, Mr. Mayor, and that's his halo.
So, um, if we could move forward to petitions and communications, we are very, um, um, blessed to have with us this evening, Dr. Katie Richardson with the Department of Health and Environmental Control. Uh, we've been giving council, uh, and the public an update, um, on a very regular basis on our response to COVID nineteen. Um, oftentimes at the beginning of each one of those reports, we'll give you all the numbers. But, you know, we all see the numbers in the press and on, on, uh, on the news media every day. And, uh, Dr. Richardson agreed to come and, and, uh, share with us what, uh, DHEC is up to. And maybe give some, uh, meaning behind those numbers and, um, so, so, so a little more interpretations. So without further ado, I'd like to call on Dr. Richardson to, uh, address council. Thank you for being with us.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for having me. Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, I want to thank the mayor for having me. And, um, I'd like to share a brief update on what we're doing as a state in response to, um, COVID nineteen. Uh, I'll share my screen now, hopefully. See if I can make this work. Okay. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. He's amazing. Okay. So this is the agenda of what I hope to cover. And, um, I promised not to talk about too many numbers, but the numbers for today just came in. And, um, as of today, we're reporting a total of five thousand seven hundred and thirty-five people who tested positive for COVID nineteen. These were the numbers as of yesterday, but today's, um, just, um, reported. Unfortunately, um, that includes, um, a hundred and ninety-two deaths statewide. In Charleston County, we have four hundred and thirty-eight cases now and, uh, and seven deaths total. Obviously, it's very important to remember that no one is immune to this disease and there's currently no vaccine. We know that this is a very serious and rapidly evolving, uh, public health event. We have an, an average of a hundred and forty-nine new infections statewide, um, per day. That is down slightly from a hundred and eighty new infections per day. The governor, as we all know, ordered the stay home or work order on April the sixth. And current data does show that social distancing and staying home to help combat the spread of disease has saved lives, um, and been vital to, uh, to what we are trying to accomplish. We're calling on everyone to stay home, and this is especially important for those with health conditions such as diabetes and heart disease. We have been fortunate to avoid some of the problems that more heavily impacted areas, um, have seen, which have really stressed our healthcare systems, including hospitalization rates, ventilator, um, availability and, um, the need to prioritize, um, resources. However, the elderly as well as African Americans, um, in our state and others have continued to be disproportionately impacted, um, unfortunately by this disease.
Dr. Richards?
Yes.
Um, this is Councilman Gregory. Are we, and, and maybe that, that comes up on the, this, this screen. Um, because of those concentrations, are we doing anything different? Uh, to make sure that we, uh, go where the low income and minority concentrations are?
Uh, good question. Um, if you'll allow me to continue, I am going to talk some about that, but please bring it up. And if I don't sufficiently address, uh, your question later in the presentation.
Thank you.
With you?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, so eighty-seven percent of those with COVID nineteen who have died in our state have been aged sixty-one or over. On the left, we see reported cases, and then, um, the second bar graph looks at, uh, death. So we see that those who have been tested is, um, much more of the bell curve that, that we often see. But the death area to the right, which means, um, our older population. Moving over to the, uh, the pie charts, uh, African Americans make up about twenty-seven percent of South Carolina's population. Uh, but showing the huge disparities, uh, here with rays, they comprise forty-three percent of COVID nineteen cases statewide and fifty-six percent of related deaths. We believe that this is hard at least because African Americans are disproportionately affected by conditions such as cardiovascular disease, diabetes, asthma and obesity. And people with such conditions are at a higher risk for severe illness from COVID nineteen. We recognize the critical need to address these inequities. To reach communities at higher risk, we are collaborating with our state and local partners, including local churches and housing authorities, the State Office for Minority Affairs and the Office on Aging, as well as so many more. And while we're working to enhance our outreach efforts, we do need to do more. We're exploring new ways to reach high-risk groups, including working to form more partnerships to help express how conditions such as diabetes, asthma and obesity exacerbate COVID nineteen symptoms. Here, we've all heard that projections, um, may suggest that the curve has begun level. However, many who are affected or continued, um, we continue to see, um, those affected and we're concerned that currently we're not testing enough to be able to interpret these projections. Cause we do want to, to make sure that we're, um, looking at these projections and being, um, cautious about, uh, what they show. What we see here and what's important to remember is that even as we work to flatten the curve, people will continue to be infected, positive cases will continue to be reported, and unfortunately deaths will continue to occur. So what this bar graph shows is the daily cumulative total in red and the number of, of cases reported daily in the blue bar graph. So we do see that, that our absolute, um, peak was around the eighth of, uh, April. But then again, around the fifteenth of April, uh, we had a peak that was nearly the same. And since then, we've seen what I consider a plateau. We did have the one day that the cases were lower. But, uh, generally we look, like to look at about a week at a time. And, uh, and so I would suggest that that is, uh, a plateau after that, um, that second peak in looking at this graph. So these are some of the response activities, um, that DHEC has been conducting. We continue to, um, investigations of suspect and confirmed cases. We're working with, um, partners across the spectrum to communicate prevention messaging. Thankfully, our WIC services are now a hundred percent, um, mobile or over the phone. And we have, uh, over four thousand new WIC users since that has happened. We've expanded options in a variety of food categories, so dregs, WIC shortages. We're working on increasing availability of our public health data. These guards and increasing testing capacity in rural areas and at-risk communities. Finally, on a regular basis, we release health alerts for our medical community, um, to, to be able to interpret the, uh, CDC guidance that comes with us, um, to our, uh, particular, uh, state and population. Interestingly, surveys show that the, that a vast majority of Americans do support strict shelter in place policies that are intended to limit the spread of disease. Eighty percent of those surveyed by the Kaiser Family Foundation said that they could shelter in place for at least another month. We know we've asked South Carolinians to make great sacrifices through social distancing, closures and other methods to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. And I know many are waiting for a time that we can fully loosen restrictions. This is the beginning of a framework put out by the Association of State and Territorial Health Officials that provides a public health framework for safely reopening. You can read all the different sort of protections that will be, um, put in place with, uh, with DHEC and the governor and, um, counties and municipalities across our state to ensure that as we do gradually reopen, uh, we are protecting, uh, our communities and the public, um, as much as possible. And this includes, um, the health and safety of workers in critical industries. Definitely those living and working in high-risk facilities such as our senior care facilities and our, uh, detention facilities, mass transit. Uh, we'll be monitoring, um, and we're immediately responding to, uh, increases in transmission rates. And, uh, certainly continuing to talk about social distancing and the need for face coverings as well as protecting employees and the public in essential businesses and private services, particularly our first responders. Here, this continues in the framework and trying to sort of put in place, uh, metrics for what we will need to put together and accomplish, uh, in order to keep the public safe. Need to be addressing, um, those experiencing homelessness as well as racial and ethnic minorities. And I know that the city of Charleston is really on the forefront of, uh, prioritizing those with housing insecurities. And we appreciate their partnership, um, in this at all times, but particularly during, um, this COVID nineteen, uh, crisis. We'll need to, um, protect those working in non-essential businesses and public services in other congregate settings and then in Charleston, in particular, the hospitality and tourism industry. in other congregate settings, and then in Charleston, in particular, the hospitality and tourism industry. So these are some of the guidelines for opening up America again. And as we look at this and think about sort of a timeline, which I know everyone would like, we continue to say that there is no set timeline that we can give, that the data will drive the timeline. But when the time comes and more restrictions are relaxed, it will remain critical that everyone continues to take steps to stop the spread of disease. Steps to stop the spread of the disease and flatten the curve include the things that we have been saying and you have been saying with us from the beginning, including practicing social distancing, which means remaining six feet apart, no crowds or large events, wearing a mask while out in public, and that means a cloth face covering, disinfecting frequently touched items often, regularly washing your hands, and monitoring for symptoms and staying home when sick or when you're in contact with someone who is sick. Once the rate of infection is assuredly low, we need to then take the steps newly every single plan recommends to move forward. We need to ramp up the testing infrastructure to acceptable levels. We need to create the public health workforce to conduct isolation and contact tracing. Plans for monitoring locations to know when we need to get more restrictive should things go wrong. We want to see testing broadly available in the community for people who have symptoms. We currently have the testing capacity between our public health lab and our healthcare facilities who've also ramped up their ability to run these COVID-19 tests, but more people do need to be tested. We will know that this is happening when we see a downward trajectory of positive tests as a percentage of total tests over a 14-day period. Right now, we see about a 10% to 11% positivity rates over every 10 people tested. One of those is positive, and we want that rate to fall considerably from there, which will be showing that we are able to test those with mild symptoms such that we better diagnose and then can isolate and contact trace to further decrease infections. This expanded access to testing must be paired with access to information and personal protective equipment essential workers. So I want to end by just again saying thank you for having me. I did want to briefly address the antibody testing, because I talk a lot about testing. And at this point in time, DHEC as well as the CDC continue that the antibody testing is not at a place that it can be used to make individual decisions. It's not at a place where a positive test for sure means that someone is immune or that that person could return to work. And we are fearful that false positives and false negatives may lead to poor decision-making about personal protective equipment, masks, or sort of decreasing social distancing. And then, I'm sure there are other questions, I'm happy to take them at this time, and I will see if I can stop sharing my screen at the moment. So anything I can answer for anyone?
Yes, can I go back to my first question?
Absolutely. Can you tell me the question again?
Okay, you did answer partly with regard to collaboration with churches and other organizations with regard to vulnerable populations?
Yes.
Okay, my question then is, what is the result of that collaboration? Did that collaboration result in more testing in those vulnerable areas? Is one question. I have several questions.
Yes, yeah, one at a time would be great, thank you. So I cannot answer the question whether it has already resulted in increased testing. I know that it has resulted in collaborations which are soon to be on the forefront or soon to be available. Those include mobile testing options that I understand are in development in Charleston County and in other parts of the state. It includes working with our federally qualified healthcare organizations, including FEDER Healthcare here in the Charleston area, who already have done an amazing job with increasing testing, particularly in Berkeley County as well as at their Nassau Street location. So they've really been at the forefront of testing among FQHC. So those are some of the testing initiatives that I know about that have occurred. And I mean, I guess what we'll do is we'll continue to watch the demographics to see sort of who gets tested and the zip code data that comes out as far as where the positives are. I don't, I guess we'll have to sort of think about how best to be able to measure that, because we don't really break down sort of the number of tests. We do get information on positive and negative tests done across the state, but I don't think that we produce any reports at this point that say sort of where those tests are done. I think that's sort of just a one statewide number at this point in time.
Because my concern is if we're not doing testing in those areas, are we relying on herding?
What do you mean herding?
Herding is when there's an infectious disease amount.
Oh, herd immunity?
Yes, yes.
Yes. No, we are definitely not relying on herd immunity in South Carolina. Unfortunately, I think we have done a good job of flattening the curve. Although we don't have these sort of prevalent studies that have been done in the state of Washington and in New York City yet, we suspect that the prevalence in South Carolina is actually going to be quite low, which means that the vast majority of South Carolinians, we believe, are still vulnerable to the infection. So we absolutely must increase testing. We must increase testing across South Carolina, particularly in rural areas and particularly in African-American communities. And that was one of those metrics I was talking about, that we want to see the number of positive tests increase, decrease, sorry, which will show that we're actually testing more people before they're more severely ill or have symptoms that may cause them to need to be hospitalized or have more severe consequences.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, Dr. Richardson?
Give us a little pal.
One more question. Mayor, I just had a quick question. Dr. Richardson, I really appreciate that presentation. It's great to be able to hear from an expert on these issues. You know, we come from a variety of different backgrounds. I'm certainly not a medical doctor, epidemiologist, anything to that nature. I wanted to ask you about a certain theme that sort of emerged in the discourse nationally about this issue. And there's beginning to be an opinion out there advanced by some medical professionals that essentially this is much more like the flu and sort of the issues that we experience with that on an annual basis than previously anticipated in the early days of this. Now that a bunch of data has come in, both from around the country and around the world, it appears this is still a minority position nationally. This is certainly not what Dr. Fauci is talking about or Dr. Birx is talking about. But I wanted just to kind of get your take on this. Now that some data has come in, where this stands in your opinion?
I've heard that as well. Thanks for bringing it up. I do think that there are aspects of COVID-19 that are similar to the flu, and we're certainly concerned that one of those aspects may be that there's some seasonality and that we may actually see a worsening of rates of infection in the fall and winter. We don't hope because it just hasn't been around that long. Whereas case fatality rates or the number of people who die per number of infections, I think we need to increase testing to know that for sure, because if we're not testing right now, our case fatality rate in Charleston County, which was answered the first or second slide, I think was around 1.6%. The regular seasonal flu is about 0.1%. So about 16 times higher than a usual year of the seasonal flu. That being said, if we were to test everyone right now, you know, that's the key part. How many people have we missed? And we need to be testing more to figure that out. I personally don't think that it would be enough to drop that case fatality number down to what a seasonal flu year would be. In addition, we certainly see different people becoming ill from COVID-19 than the seasonal flu. So in that respect, although the elderly also are affected by flu seasons, we also see more sort of young adults having severe sequelae of this than what I'd say is the seasonal flu, especially the strokes that we've seen in some in their 30s and 40s, those who are younger with the comorbidities. I think this has been worse for them. Obviously, it's been not as severe for kids. So I do think that there's some case that it's like the seasonal flu, but I don't think even widespread testing, we will see that this is anywhere near, this will be much higher magnitude of the severe sequelae and deaths than the seasonal flu, but time will tell.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you also, Dr. Richardson, for giving all this valued information. Obviously, testing resonated in your talk. Do we have any feel for where the funding is going to come to be able to implement the level of testing that you indicated is needed? And particularly, it will come to local governments that would assist in that effort?
That's not my area of expertise where the funding comes from. But I do certainly believe that local governments, as well as community leaders and community partners, will need to be, you know, vital participants in this. Right now, DHEC doesn't do any of the actual testing, the swabbing. We run many of the tests in our public health lab, but we will depend on partners, and we will certainly, you know, we're already seeing some money come from the federal government, some money coming from state governments. We've seen regulations where insurance companies are going to be paying for COVID-19 testing. So we're supporting the federally qualified health centers, as I said, with supplies. And then we'll also, you know, run those tests in our public health lab. So I think the funding will come from a variety of sources, but it must happen. So we'll have to continue to, you know, to look for the funding necessary to make it happen on a widespread scale.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I would add that the $1.9 billion that the state received from the last CARES Act is specifically for COVID-19-related expenses. Testing obviously is related, so there's no question that the governor has the, some financial resources that have been given to him to do more testing. Councilmember Sheeley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Katie, thank you so much for coming and spending some time with us. Katie is a regular attendee at our Health and Wellness Committee. We always get to hear all sorts of great stuff from her, and I really appreciate it. I have a question. I heard you, I think, say on the antibody testing side of things that there's been some false negatives, it's not as reliable as you might like. As we're devising a strategy to get out on the backside of this, what testing is going to be the testing we're looking at if antibody testing is not reliable and we're testing people for the disease? Where's that sort of gap filler between disease testing and antibody testing so we know we're in the place where we can start opening things back up again?
Well, I hope antibody testing will improve. And I think there's already the next generation of antibody tests that are being developed right now that will be able to better correlate positive IgG, which is the long-term antibodies, with immunity. And then more time will also help to tell us, you know, how long that immunity may last if indeed people are immune with antibodies. So I do believe there will be a role for antibody testing. I just, I don't, and I don't think the CDC believes that we are there yet, that our current antibody tests help with surveillance, and that's what's happened in New York City and the state of Washington. And we certainly hope that that will come to South Carolina too, and we'll use that. And we're very appreciative of what MUFC is doing right now. They're doing studies looking at sort of a high-risk group in their hospital, those who've been working in the emergency departments and the COVID wards and comparing them to lower-risk employees. So we will learn from all of these studies. And I do believe there, I hope that there will be a role for antibody testing, but I just don't think we're there yet.
Dr. Richardson?
It'll be a combination. Councilmember Gregory?
Yes, did you mention the rate of infection for the state?
The rate, well, I know that the rate, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but.
Is that the R not?
It may have been on the slide. I think for Charleston County, it's about 105 per 100,000 population. So that's the rate for Charleston County. That's about, I think about 19th now in the state. I'm pulling that off the top of my head, so I might be wrong. We started off having a much higher rate. We were sort of third, and then we dropped to ninth. And now thankfully, we're at 19, so we're almost sort of in the midway there. Certainly, our case fatality rate is lower than the state as a whole, and I think that says a lot about our healthcare facilities here and the healthcare that people receive in our communities. Did someone ask about the R not also?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, so the R not, I'm not sure that we have a good gauge of that for South Carolina right now. I haven't seen that. Basically, the R not is how many people will a positive person infect?
Yeah.
So that's what that means. And we believe that it's likely higher than the seasonal flu. But again, without sort of widespread testing, it's a little bit difficult to get that number. We know that there's some super-spreeder events, and that's one of the reasons that the large gatherings are such a risk right now. And so one person could be at a large family gathering, for instance, who may be infectious, and many of those at that event may then become symptomatic and be diagnosed. So for some of those events, the R not is very large. What we need to do to begin on the downward side of the curve is really to get that R not below one. To have, you know, each positive person infect less than one other person. I do not think that we're there yet, but you know, that's sort of what we believe when we see a flattening and then a downward, you know, a downward part of the curve as far as daily cases.
Dr. Richardson, I appreciate, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Well, Dr. Richardson, thank you. Oh, Councilmember Sheeley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. And Dr. Richardson, thank you very much for being here and serving on our Health and Wellness Committee as well. And I don't think any of us imagined that any of this was going to happen when we developed that committee, but that's got incredible amount of expertise from the Citadel, the College of Charleston, from MUFC, from Roper, from Charleston County Schools, and it's a great committee, and I think it's helped us a lot. But just wanted to ask you on, I know that a couple of weeks ago, DHEC had put out a kind of a prediction of cases starting to come down. And I think last week was supposed to be, I think it was 958, but the cases. but the cases ended up, I think, for this past week at 1,041. And I heard you say kind of leveling out. But does that change the thinking of it going down? Because I think the scale, it said maybe 100 cases a week after this week or something like that.
Right, yeah. So you're talking about Dr. Eric Brenner's projection, and that is still on our website. He's a long-term epidemiologist with the World Health Organization, as well as with the CDC and DHEC. And we've been lucky to have him assist us with some of those numbers. We also look at the University of Washington, and they do projections out about sort of how many total deaths we may have by the beginning of August. We do believe that we're starting to decrease. We don't feel like that we're, hopefully at this point, on an increase. We're really hoping that we have sort of all the pieces in place to protect our communities, especially those who are most vulnerable when we do open up again. So I would say for Dr. Brenner's projections, I don't think they have changed from those numbers that you're talking about. I don't know if he's actually redone them. They will be posted when he does. But I do know that the University of Washington's projections do continue to say that they believe we've hit our peak deaths. But that is with the caveat that we stay, continue our sort of stay-at-home order through the end of May. So if that doesn't hold true, I think now they're actually saying the middle of June, and they are increasing their estimate of the total number of deaths for South Carolina. It's jumped around a little bit. It was in sort of the mid 250s or so, and now it's up to around 360. So they do continue to look at the data and adjust their projections based on, you know, what's happening in the recent weeks.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Anyone else? So thank you, Dr. Richardson, for that update. And it's been mentioned twice already, but thank you for your service on our own City of Charleston Wellness Committee. You're a great asset to our community. And let us know anything else we can do to help you along as well.
Likewise, and thank you for having me.
Thank you. All right. So next, I do want to call on Jacob Lindsay to give us a brief update on our comprehensive plan. Jacob, are you out there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. How are you all doing today?
Good.
Very good. I wanted to just give you a brief update in regards to our comprehensive plan. And I'm going to attempt to do a screen share here. So we'll see if I can bring this up. And I believe that you all should be seeing, hopefully...
We can see it?
My screener. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first thing, as you all know, is that we are in a comprehensive plan year. Comprehensive plan is the guiding document for these growths. And every 10 years, it has to be updated by state law. And we are currently in the process of doing that. And, you know, we plan for hurricanes. We plan for all kinds of things. Pandemic, surprisingly, was not one of the things that we had planned for. But we still have to deliver the comprehensive plans during this year. And we are operating under our deadline, which is February 2021 by state law, although we would like to deliver a draft plan by the end of this calendar year. And we've been working tirelessly behind the scenes to help create a new condition adjusted for the coronavirus, social distancing, that's still going to allow us to deliver this plan on time. Now, this slide, this timeline in brief, shows the tasks that we had originally laid out for you. And this is the presentation that I gave to you back in March, March 9. And this was our original projections to when we would do those things. And then this shows our current timing based on current conditions under the coronavirus, social distancing. So obviously, we are done with our pre-planning work. We have begun the kickoff for these plans. But our community partner input, which is all the work with your constituents, with all of our community partners, such as the medical university institutions, neighborhood organizations, as well as what we had hoped to call our civic labs, which is going to be a really great public engagement exercise with experts and comprehensive planning. We're not able to do those things now because they are in-person exercises. Now, we can definitely shift some of them virtual, but in-person, in-public meetings is the best way to have these conversations. So we are currently hoping to shift these into late July and August, based on what we currently know about the time that we might be most able to have in-person meetings. They may be under social distancing guidelines. We may be having in-person meetings with everyone six feet apart, wearing personal protective equipment. But for now, we are going to move these public events out into quarter three, July, August, and early September. And we think we might have the best chance to actually gather together. We still are going to be working to draft the plan, finalize it toward the end of the year, and head toward an approval under our state deadline. Now, we're lucky here because we have an incredibly, I have the privilege of working with an incredibly experienced staff of people who have done this before and who are really true professionals in planning. We also have a great set of consultants that we have selected with the help of many of you who have sat on our consultant selection committees. And thank you for doing that, for the council members who participated in those. So we have great staff. We have great consultants. There's plenty of expertise to help us deliver this. But at the end of the day, we have to have in-person public engagement to help give us direction about the future of our city. And to shift to this next slide here. This is our new plan. Currently, we are hoping to hire our consultants. And these will be coming to you at your next council meeting in May. And I want to begin with the most important of all of these consultants is the consultant that's helping us with climate change, with flooding, and with how we address issues related to water. And that is our top-level concern. And then secondarily, we are focusing on issues of housing affordability. And hopefully, we can go ahead and hire these consultants and begin the process of analyzing our conditions and get them to work. So that's going to come to you at your next council meeting. We're also going to hope to launch our online input. And this is on schedule with what we were anticipating even before the virus hit. We want to make sure that we have an online input where people can log on. They can engage our surveys, give us input on the comprehensive plan for the course of the rest of the year. And that's on schedule with our original plan. In July and through September, assuming that we can meet even under social distancing, we want to begin our public engagement. And then in the fall, we want to draft our plan and have an open house. Now, in person, we want to have our couple learning tour, which is public meetings with each of you. And we've talked before about setting up meetings in your districts. And if we are able to do those things safely and under social distancing guidelines in the high summer, early fall, we will be working with each of you to do that. And of course, we'll be launching our online survey. And then separately, both online and in-person, we want to have our civic labs, which are going to be a series of interactive discussions with experts from housing, from transportation, in matters of climate change and flooding. And those things, again, will occur later in the summer. So we have pushed these activities off until we think we can actually have them safely. Now, with that said, down at the bottom, this is our goal right now. We want to meet our state deadline of delivering a comprehensive plan by February of 2021. However, we anticipate readjusting our schedule as needed. If we get into the summer and it turns out it's not possible for us to safely meet, to have large meetings with your constituents, and to engage all the people that we need to talk to when we craft this plan, then we're going to push things back. We are not going to bring forward a comprehensive plan until it has robust input from all of the citizens in the city who want to participate. And for us, for Charleston, to some degree, that means meeting in person. Now, if we do get to that point where we're in the middle of the summer or the fall and we're still not able to safely meet, we're going to come back to you and continue to update you. And if we need to push back our deadline, we'll consider that at that point. But for now, we're going to continue to aim at doing the great work that we are able to do, hiring our consultants, getting them to work, and pushing our public engagement back into the middle of the summer and the early fall when we think it might be safest for us to meet. So that's our current approach. And it's a very short update. But I wanted to just let you all know that we are, first of all, hoping to do this great work that we know is so important, but also thinking about how we do it safely heading into the summer season and the fall. So with that, I'll conclude this presentation and just say thank you for everyone who has participated in our consultant procurement meetings. And we will be bringing those to you at your next meeting in May. So, Mayor, I'll hand it back to you.
Great. Thank you, Jacob. Any questions for Mr. Lindsay? Okay, I don't see any. We'll keep moving along. Thank you for that report.
Good job, Jacob.
So next is our committee report. First up is Committee on Human Resources, Councilmember Jackson. You're on.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you. We had essentially a kickoff meeting of the Human Resources council members who now make up the Human Resources Committee. And we realized that we're all brand-new to this opportunity to support our Human Resources Department and the great staff that are established to provide services and benefits for primarily. So we really appreciated the fact that we were asking for as much of a COVID-19 update as we could ask for from our agency representatives. And Director Kay Cross worked overtime, I'm sure, with a couple of first-class members to really give us a comprehensive look at what the city is responsible to do during our period of at-home and combination of, you know, keeping our workers safe. I felt like I learned a ton. For example, I didn't know that in the very first bill that the federal government put forward, that Congress put forward, that was primarily to impact communities, people's ability to go through the virus from a health and safety aspect, that there was essentially an unemployment insurance part of it that people can opt to stay home if they have reasons because they have children at home that don't have any other, you know, childcare options during this pandemic. And they can get their leave if they choose to, but they don't have to use their personal leave. They can opt to stay home. And then they would volunteer. The bill requires that they would be paid 60% of their full-time salary. So we received information about a few of our staff members are making that decision. Two people working full-time, somebody's got to be at home with the children. I was very happy to know about that bill. I didn't realize that that had gone into effect almost right away as soon as the pandemic was recognized, you know, by the administration. We went on from that kind of information gathering or disseminating to our council members to begin talking about the resolution that this council had put forward that we all agreed on. And then the agreement for the resolution was to ask the Human Resources Committee to study and make some sort of recommendation about introducing a family life, paid family life leave benefit for our employees. And again, I was very impressed. And I think we all were to appreciate the background work that Ms. Cross and her staff had already been doing in response to our resolution. So they've done a detailed study of, we put forward a benefit for them to look at a benefit that would be equal to the federal government's paid 12 weeks. And so they worked with the 12-week as the extreme, you know, most that an employee could ask to be paid during a family life leave event, all the way down to two extra weeks, and categorized that by the overall cost, the demographics. We're waiting to get that chart. They wanted to fine-tune it a little bit before they circulated it out. But we saw it on our Zoom meeting as a shared document. And we've also done a lot of comparative study of 33 employers that, we haven't seen that list yet, but they talked us through some of the determinations that they've made and what other employers do for family life leave. So I feel like we've got, you know, a great wealth of comparative information. The Commission on Women had also done some of their own comparative homework like that. So I forwarded that to our committee members early this week. So I feel like we've got a great baseline of being able to make some sort of recommendation of decisions and bring them back to the council. We started out, I think on the Women's Commission, we started out not really assuming that this would have to be a budget-year decision because other communities have implemented it, you know, in the midst of a current budget. But I think out of respect for the way that our budget process is going to kick off the spring and go through summer, that we will probably make a recommendation to the council, and then it would be implemented for the 2021 budget. So thank you very much for the opportunity. I really want to just make a public thank you and a statement of gratitude to Kay Cross and her department for all the background that they've worked hard on.
Great, thank you. So that's still a work in progress.
Yes, sir. We didn't take any votes or make any decisions about anything.
Any questions regarding all that, for anyone, from anyone? All right, thank you for that report. That's no action required by council. Next up is our Committee on Public Safety, Councilmember Shade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met yesterday afternoon. As you can see from your agenda, we had a very ambitious agenda to cover yesterday. Items 2A, B, and C, I'm going to try to lump together. We received from court administration some information regarding pending cases, including DUI cases. Back in August of 2019, it was reported a total of 396 jury trial cases were pending, including 167 DUI cases. That number changed a little bit in November of 2019 to 398 jury trials and 183 DUIs. As of April of 2020, the number of pending jury trial requests are down to 195, and DUI cases 150. Beginning in January, once a week, the municipal judges are holding pre-trial conferences for week-long sessions. Of that, they have resolved a total of 196 cases. So the pre-trial conferences are working very well. They're reducing the number of caseloads that we're experiencing in municipal court. And as you know, municipal court has kind of taken a hiatus, handling only those cases that involve folks who are in detention and not handling anything else besides these kind of emergency-type matters. We extended the application process for municipal judges. Through the end of March, we received a total of 19 new applicants. Friday, the committee is going to meet to sort of sort through those 19 applicants to decide if we want to interview all of them and come up with a schedule of how to handle these applicants, and then make a recommendation to the mayor for those positions. So good news on that front. I asked the two chiefs, Chief Curry and Chief Reynolds, to give us sort of a state of report as to the particular departments. A lot of information was received from both of them. I'm going to try to reduce this as fast as I can to give you sort of a sense of where our departments are. I will tell you that we were very fortunate that both of our chiefs are who we have doing this pandemic crisis. They are working together hand-in-hand with all of this, and we should be very fortunate and very appreciative of their efforts. We received a report from Chief Curry first regarding the fire department. He reported that a total of 77 new recruits have been hired since July of 2018. And this is very critical. Our vacancy rate has dropped from 21% down to 9.3%. Our call volume that they're responding to has been retooled just to address life-threatening responses. He's also filled the leadership vacuum with deputy and assistant chiefs, and he's been doubling down on the efforts regarding the accreditation for the fire department. The bad news with, I think, that we are going to be facing and we'll be addressing this in our budgets... The bad news with, I think that we are gonna be facing and will be addressing this in our, uh, budgets. Is facilities, um, for, uh, the, the fire department. At some point in time, we're gonna lose all Milford Street, uh, and we need to find a replacement facility for that. And he listed a, a bunch of stations that are either in need of repair or replacement, and including Station Twenty-two on Canhoy. Station Twenty-three on Johns Island, Station Ten West Ashley, Station Fifteen on Cunningham Street. Station Sixteen off of Ashley Hall Plantation Road and Station Twenty off of, uh, Pinefield Road. So we've got some facility issues we're gonna need to be addressing some, some time in the main, in the near future with our fire department. Chief Reynolds gave us a, sort of a same report regarding his department. Of course, the, the highlight revolved around where are we doing with our racial bias audit? Uh, he hired a compliance manager, Wendy Striver, um, to, uh, it's, I think, just started recently. Uh, he has realigned the Office of Community Oriented, Oriented Policing and Traffic to Office of Community Oriented Policing. He has, um. I'm sorry, lost the spot. He has also made some modifications regarding training, and he sent two officers off to get event, um, additional education and accreditation from the police academy. The training's been modified to comply with body cameras, citizen compliance, of course. And he is working on a five-year strategic plan. Thirty new hires in the June twenty-twenty class and anticipate another thirty more hires in September of, of twenty-twenty. Property crimes are tend, are trending down, uh, violent crimes are trending up, aggravated assaults, particularly with, since the COVID-nineteen. Um, experience has trended up a little bit. But he wanted to emphasize the city is very, very safe place for us to live. Capital improvements, um, the West Ashley Forensic, Forensic Center, which will consist of twenty-two thousand square feet. Should be completed by on time in early twenty-twenty-one. The other areas of concern are, then the mayor mentioned this earlier, um, in the part of our Ways and Means Committee report. The, the former municipal courtroom, um, on Lockwood Boulevard has been, uh, converted to a state-of-the-art training facility. We've got some other critical needs to address, including, um, facilities of our police fleet, our radio, radio division at Milford. And the headquarters that we have right now. So those are things that we need to be looking at in the main future. He did mention, uh, other issues about a joint fire police training facility to, regarding Rescue Task Force. So overall, um, both the fire chiefs are working hand in hand, um, on a lot of the issues that we're dealing with, that facing our community. No action is required and no action is taken. That's just for information purposes, probably.
Thank you. And might I, um, I think many of y'all know and maybe saw pictures that the fire department, uh, responded so promptly and admirably. To, um, to put out fires at, uh, on Percy Street just this afternoon. There was quite a blaze going on there. They were on the scene within two minutes of, uh, getting the, the call and did, uh, just a terrific job. I think both Chief Reynolds and Chief Courier are on the line if anybody has any questions for, for either them or of the chairman. Anybody? All right. Well, thank you for that report. Again, uh, no, no action required by council on that one. Uh, next up is Committee on Public Works, Councilmember Waring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, we met yesterday. We all know that drainage is a huge problem for the city of Charleston, huge concern for really all of us. But we're getting some, many victories, and we need to pay attention to those victories, and those victories kind of happen across the city. We had the update of the Church Creek Basin. I'm gonna ask Mr. Fountain to touch on the, uh. Specifics or Cliff Note versions summarizing those, um, AI, one, two, and three. Mr. Fountain?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Councilman Waring, thank you. So the, very briefly, I think we talked about with the, um, Church Creek Bio-Property Update, that, uh, at this point, we've. Acquired thirty-nine properties that have been returned to grass lots within the basin. Uh, we have one additional property currently in real estate closing. Two more that have been approved by council, but we're waiting for, uh, owner agreements to, to move to closing. Um, and then we have one that was recently approved by, um, council at the last meeting. For acceptance of the, the grant that will move into the process, and we have one more property coming to, um, council for acceptance on a grant that we received notice. We were awarded, uh, at the next council meeting. That's about, uh, a total of nine million dollars of property acquisition and demolition that's occurred in the basin. And has returned a, a pretty good, um, amount of area to natural grass to sort of help, help combat the flooding. Uh, that also ties into our. Our plans, uh, in Church Creek in general, which were tied into our National Fish and Wildlife Foundation approach that we sort of adopted after the. The Dutch Dialogues discussion to, to look at doing some natural system floodplain and wetland enhancements, uh, on. The basin to sort of supplement some of the long-term, large-scale infrastructure projects that have been identified, uh, out there, which is actually item two. Uh, we are planning to go out with a, uh, solicitation asking for qualifications from design firms, uh, consulting firms on the. Converting the buyout properties into, uh, multi-use properties where we're, uh, basically enhancing how much drainage benefit we're getting. Versus just a grass field, whether they can be detention features, whether they can, uh, be urban forests, uh, other naturalized wetland systems, other approaches. Uh, we're, we're looking to put that out and have a firm onboard this summer. Um, that will also let us run that project, which has a lot of outreach component directly into the other National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant that we were notified we. Uh, will be receiving about a month ago, which was the, um, almost one point four million dollar. Grant award for doing that same type of project, but on a much larger scale, on large-scale proj, uh, parcels in the area. So we'll continue into acquiring some of those properties and working through that design work in the, um, fall and early next year. So that's sort of the, um, the work expected for the next about three years within that basin as we move into construction on those projects as well. And that ties us directly into item two, uh, which is also related to Church Creek, and item two is the. And we, we've talked about briefly at, at council recently, uh, the work we've been doing in collaboration with Charleston County for adding, um. Drainage capacity under Glenn McConnell, uh, to, as, as the county gets into widening that road. To basically restore the pre-existing connection that from Lake Otter down through Long Branch Creek and out, um, out to the south. This, this is one of the outfalls that Church Creek, the Church Creek Basin originally had. It would provide some significant benefits to the Church Creek Basin as well as to the, um, the basin of Lake Otter, which has some flooding as well. Uh, there is a, a balance that we have to hit as we add capacity there that we can't overwhelm, um, Long Branch Creek, which also has some, some flood considerations from constrictions that occur in Long Branch Creek. Item two is, was a discussion where we, we went over, um. NOAA is a, uh, as an organization in Charleston, has had plans looking at Long Branch Creek and doing some. Capacity improvements and natural system improvements in that area for quite some time. And they've asked us to partner with them on another, um, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant to look at basically making those improvements to Long Branch Creek. So we had a discussion that that's our next likely application, um, for grant funding. Um, on that system, um, NOAA is one of the, the actual funding agencies for NIFWIF as well, so they have a really good understanding on the program, and certainly the city's had good success. With that funding and it, and the grant agencies generally like to see sort of sequential projects that build upon each other and really kind of convert the whole area. So this is really a nice, a nice opportunity for us to leverage, again, leverage another agency as well as leveraging the county of, um, Charleston, who's agreed to partner on this project. And leveraging existing projects that we're doing, plus this, um, Dutch Dialogues approach of kind of renaturalizing and building resiliency. For, for flood, uh, flood relief projects.
Well, Mr. Fountain, can you touch on how some of these aspects of the, uh, Weston and Sampson, um. Study is now beginning kind of maybe?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the Weston Sampson study looked at sort of a few different options in the area. Um, what, I mean, one of the approaches they took was the, um, sort of a traditional pump station approach. That, that's still one of the things we're looking at as sort of a long-term project in the basin, but it's, it's obviously, uh, much more expensive, uh, much more complex. Approach. So what we're trying to do is take some of their other recommendations, like the, the reconnection of the Lake Otter pathway. Um, and again, leverage some ongoing projects with, um, the Glenn McConnell widening is a really good opportunity to say, okay, we have a project, the county has a project. We can build both of these projects at the same time, um, use each other's resources and, and get, get a lot more done, uh, the same amount of money. So the, um, the Lake Otter work is one of the things that Weston Sampson had recommended. We think that's, that's sort of one of these near-term. Projects. So we obviously still have a series of improvements we have to make, but we're currently in the encroachment permitting process, um, with DOT. On that project, we've been discussing with the county to incorporate it into their design work. So there, there is, there is a good. Kind of short-term pathway for some of these Weston Sampson recommendations, in addition to some of the recommendations we looked at from the Dutch Dialogues of sort of renaturalizing and opening up the. The drainage storage again in the, in the basin.
Okay, good. Can you touch on the pump station, uh, down there at, uh?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't, so I don't have as good a segue into the pump station as I did between the first two, but the, the pump, the pump station is something that we've been. We've been talking about a little bit at the Public Works Utilities Committee, um, over the last few sessions, and I just wanted to kind of highlight in a little more detail. And that, um. The Concord Street Pump Station actually services, uh, two, two major drainage projects, kind of historical drainage projects, um, in the last twenty or thirty years of the. City Charleston, so the, the, one of the first major drainage projects in Calhoun East, uh, which is an underground tunnel system. Uh, that, that drains much of the kind of east side of the peninsula on the Concord Street area, as well as the Market Street, um, project that, uh, we added. Basically added another tunnel to drain, so the Market Street basin and connected into that existing deep tunnel system and enhanced that pump station as that project went in. So this, basically, we have a, a pump station that's about twenty years old, most of the, uh, electrical system, uh, mechanical pump systems. And the, uh. Actual kind of functionality control systems of that pump station. And one of the issues we've had over the last year or so is it's, it's in a pretty harsh, um, pretty harsh environment. It's exposed to a lot of salt water. It's, um, very humid, obviously, in Charleston, hard on electrical systems. It's a very beautiful pump station, but it's a little, little bit aged. So we've had, we've had sort of increasing incidents of maintenance issues and failures. We've had to go out and, and make. Kind of repairs or make upgrades into the system. We have had some parts that are no longer supported by manufacturers. Luckily, we have a, a really wonderful, um. Independent firm that we work with on, on the station who's sort of hand-cobbled together many of the, uh, systems that we still have out there and really has a good understanding of what works and what doesn't on the station. And he's done a great job helping us keep it running. Um, but one of the things we've, we've done over the last six months is said, hey, this is becoming a real issue. So we've developed, uh, a really a twenty-year capital and O and M plan for the pump stations in order to say, here's what we need to be spending on an annual basis. So we can analyze this out, budget it into our budgets. But on the short run, of course, we don't, we haven't been doing that, so we don't have it set up with that approach. So what we're looking to do is, is probably, um, raise some awareness to the, the committee. And then see if there are any questions regarding this that we would likely need to look at using some of our, either our small project budget or some of our capital budget to. Kind of jumpstart that approach to get some of the deferred, again, deferred maintenance costs, um. Managed so that we can look into replacing the electrical systems, look into replacing these pumps, and look into replacing the computer systems before we have any, uh, more serious issues that we can't address.
Now, that's a pump system that, uh, prior to that system being put in, the mayor, uh, pointed this out so good yesterday that. Those of us who are old enough, remember prior to that system being put in, East Bay and Calhoun used to flood literally by the number of feet, uh, not by inches. And, and so did, uh, meeting in, uh. Meeting in Calhoun. Uh, that's the pump station that, uh, Mr. Fountain just spoke about, uh, being about twenty years, or I don't know how many years overdue now. For, um, maintenance, but if we don't get those things fixed, then we'll go back to what was. So thank you on that, Mr., uh, Mr. Fountain. We bring these projects up so all twelve council members can begin to think, not begin, you already are engaged on projects and, or needs in your own districts. Uh, we've made this request before, the smaller project list. I don't know if Mr. Fountain has heard from all twelve council members on projects that they'd like to see come forward in their respective districts. But, um, the, the floor is certainly open, not today, but certainly call Mr. Fountain. And let him know if there's a project or two in your area that, um, you'd like to get on that list. Councilman, uh, Griffin, Councilman, uh, Appel have been very good, very engaged at, uh, on this process, on this, uh. Stormwater committee, and I tell you, um, it is definitely, and obviously the mayor, it's a team approach, uh, pushing forward. Because this drainage problems that we have is gonna take a collective, and it's just not one or two people pushing. Gotta be thirteen along with all, all staff and everything. Now, we had a report from, um, uh, Mr. Wilbert on, uh, the, the C-Wall, and, uh, Mr. Wilbert, can you give a, um. Cliff Note version of what you summarized for us on yesterday?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to do that. So just in, in general, we, uh, on April twenty, the Army Corps put out the, uh, tentative selective plan for a sixty-day comment period. Which is why we're hearing so many, uh, comments from the public about the opportunity perhaps to, to speak longer. Um, this is the time where the Army Corps is seeking the, um, the comments from the public, which will become part of the record, uh, in their report. Um, from a city perspective, you know, this is, uh, one of the threats that the city faces. This particular solution, which is a, uh, primarily a flood wall solution with a wave attenuation system. Is really designed to, um, protect the city from storm surge. Um, and, uh, as we all know, storm surge is probably the most deadly, uh, the most costly, uh, threat that we face. But, um, it's just one of the many threats that we face. And now is the time for the public to engage. We want to encourage the public to engage. We put a link on our website. We've also, uh, encouraged people to go to the Army Corps' website, read the report, look through the, um. Storyboard that I presented yesterday, which I won't go through today, that, uh, takes you kind of through the project. Look at the benefits, look at the costs, look at what they're proposing. Um, the Army's very interested in your comments. Obviously, the city's very interested. And we in the city will continue to engage with the Army over, uh, the next eighteen months till we get to a final report, which will be sometime in May of twenty-twenty-one. So this is just the beginning. We, we, and one last point, you know, up till this point, we were really determining if the Army felt we had a project. By the release of the tentative selective plan, they've determined and feel that we have a project that meets federal interest, interest. And, uh, the cost-benefit ratio is favorable, that we would be able to be competitive. Therefore, that's why we're gonna continue to go forward, and, uh, now's the time for public comment to unveil the project that, uh, everybody's been working on.
Mr. Wilbert, can you touch on how you can get to the website and, uh, take a look at, uh, what you presented as well as, uh. Find links to ongoing projects across the city of Charleston, drainage projects across the city of Charleston?
Sure, I, I certainly can, Mr. Chairman. So, um, if you go to the, uh, if, the easiest way would be to just Google, um. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Charleston District, and right up on the front page, you'll see the Charleston Peninsula Flood Project. And if you click on that, it will take you to the project. There's a link there for not just the, a, a really good video of the commander over there explaining the project, but also. Another link that will take you to the storyboard, which really walks you through the project. Takes you a couple of times to get through it, to learn how to work it. There's a lot of, um, ways that you can even expand what the storyboard shows you on the first page. And I would encourage, uh, as many people as possible to go to that. So use those tools. That's why they did, they've really gone, uh, put a lot of effort into trying to educate the public in this time. Of, uh, not being able to have public meetings. Uh, the second thing you mentioned is on our website, uh, the city's website, under both the, uh, Stormwater Department and the, uh. Uh, Resilience Department on, in our Sea Level Rise Strategy, there is a link to all of the, uh, city projects ongoing on the, um. The drainage projects, all the work that Mr. Fountain's been doing, uh, and his team's been doing for, for quite some time, and it covers the entire city. And it's really, uh, interesting. I think people find it interesting to go on there and just see how much work is really going on in the city. And it covers the entire city, and we put that together about a year ago as a collaborative effort with certainly, uh, the Stormwater Department or GIS Department. And then, uh, Ms. McCain from, uh, our department put that together, and it was, uh, uh, just a great effort. So that the citizens can see the amount of work that's really going on, and, uh, it's pretty impressive to take a look at.
Thank you for sharing that, because we need to push that information out, uh, to the public so they can see. There are a lot of things going on. There's a wonderful momentum that came out of that, uh, Dutch Dialogue. There are a lot of things going on. There's a wonderful momentum that came out of that Dutch Dialogues and that momentum is continuing. So we want the people to want us to tap in as well as people we represent. Mr. Mayor, that's pretty much the extent of my report. Do you have any input? And again, thank you for reaching out to Corps Engineers on, because that was part of discussion as well. Getting longer than sixty days to comment period. And that's wonderful solution you all came up with. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. And, and I will pick up on that suggestion from a little while ago and, and schedule for us to have a workshop meeting just on this Corps of Engineers presentation. So we can go through it from A to Z, even though many comments may, may still be forthcoming, but I, I think that would be a great exercise for, for us to engage in. So another committee with lots going on, lots of reports, but no action again required by council. So we'll keep moving on to Committee on Ways and Means.
Move for approval. Second, it's been properly moved in second and there.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it. Next, we have three, three matters up for second reading.
Move for approval. Second.
Is that for all three items, Mr.?
All three.
All three items.
And I second that, yeah.
Yes, I have it.
All right. And do we have any discussion on any of those matters? They were pretty, pretty ordinary kind of things. All in favor, please say aye. You oppose, the ayes have it. Now for third. Items one and three, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Guys have it. Next, we have bills up for first reading. First is an ordinance to amend our Design Review Board Oversight of Affordable Housing Development. And, and, and let me share that this was brought forward in order to keep some affordable housing projects moving along during the coronavirus era that we're now living in. Unfortunately, due to some technical reasons, we haven't been able to schedule DRB and BAR meetings yet. We're still working on that public input part. I hope have that worked out soon, but we still haven't done that. But it's come to my attention today that this matter really didn't have a substantive conversation with some of the DRB members, which would have been a, a very wise thing to do. In addition to that, the, the format of it, it turns out, I'll admit, isn't, isn't quite what we need really to, to make something effective without having to go to the Planning Commission and back. We need to pass it as an emergency ordinance. So I still think the concept is good, but I'm going to ask council if we could defer this matter this evening. And bring to you on Thursday a, a slightly different emergency ordinance after having some conversations with our DRB members. So we have a motion to defer and a second, aim discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I really appreciate the fact that you have the determination that you did today. So I do think that the, the approach you're giving us now is the right, the right one. And so I look forward to supporting it as the emergency change that we, we know we do need.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor to defer, say aye. Thank you very much. And then there's one matter. This is regarding height in certain zoning or certain districts. Mr. Lindsay, do you want to comment on what, what, what this ordinance is doing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, we passed a, a change in, in terms of the baseball elevations. And what this does is it grants to property owners who happen to be in zoning districts that are affected by that change the additional height so that they are not penalized. So for example, if you were in a baseball elevation that has to go up two feet, this grants the additional two feet to, to those locations. And it, it equalizes out the changes that we have recently made to, to our flood elevations. It's simply an ordinance.
We lost you there.
It's frozen. Do not penalize.
Jacob, I'm afraid. Your internet connection was not good there. We lost you.
Maybe. Let's try again. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
We can hear you.
Okay, so recently, we adopted a change to free board requirements, as you all know. Okay, so, so recently.
Mr. Lindsay, I think we, we got the picture that we're destined for elevation, giving a little extra height where it's needed, where we're elevating that one or two feet as has been passed by council. Can I entertain?
I move for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it. Would you all mind if we step back on just one matter? I'm putting Ms. Johnson on the spot here. We, we passed in Ways and Means the budget for some of those extra CDBG funds. The question didn't come up, but Ms. Johnson, Gianna Johnson and Chris Jordan have really been working hard on a plan to help those who are experiencing homelessness and those who may risk becoming homeless. And I thought if, if we could just belabor a couple of more minutes, if, if Gianna, if you could give us a little update on that plan, even though we've already approved the budget for it. We're not hearing you.
Mayor, certainly. Thank you for the opportunity to share about this funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Both under our Community Development Block Grant Program, as well as our Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program. One component, as was detailed in the documents we sent to you and council, was assistance for persons experiencing homelessness. Currently, that amount, which is three hundred, a little over three hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, would literally assist people who are homeless with both temporary and permanent lodging, which could be hotel rooms. But we are working hard to do more permanent housing, which means rental in most cases for these individuals. That funding could also be used for transportation and other related expenses. We are working with One Eighty Place in this regard, Origin, South Carolina, and the Navigation Center to get persons who are facing these challenges in housing. The other component of this is for homelessness. There are those who are currently in apartments. They are struggling to stay in those apartments. And so we are providing a little over a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars to help those persons who are encountering those challenges because of the pandemic, because they've been furloughed for a number of different reasons. And once we, since we've secured the approval from you all, I sent a email to HUD this afternoon asking when we would see a grant agreement from them. The goal is once you have signed that grant agreement, we would do a request for applications from our local housing providers who are in this industry, if you will, to help us get this money on the street and get it in the hands of those individuals who need it the most. We're also having conversations with Tri-United Way, Amanda Lawrence and Mike Gibbons, so that we partner with them to help leverage these funds against other dollars that are on the street, if you will, so that we can maximize the number of people that we're able to assist.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you.
You're so welcome.
Any questions for Ms. Johnson about that? Councilmember Shade?
I just wanted to say thank you for your work and all of that. And I may have mentioned this earlier, that a woman walked in my office one day just off the street looking for assistance. And it's the simple things that they're looking for that they need that we take for, for granted. And so when things like this pop up, they are so severely impacted on needs that they have. So Gianna, thank you for what you're doing with all of that. And we just need to be mindful of how these kind of catastrophic events affect those who are most in need of our, our assistance. So thank you for your work.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your support.
Great. Anything else to come before council this evening? All right, hearing that, we'll have a, an emergency meeting Thursday at five thirty. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, May the twelfth at five o'clock. We stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have you safe? Thanks. Good night.